Call to order.
Keith, is there anything over there?
It's seven o'clock though, right? Okay. Hi, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the February Franklin County School Corporation meeting of the Board of Trustees. I'm calling the meeting to order. I would like if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and then take a moment of silence afterward. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up on the agendas, the consent items. Are there any questions? No discussion? Can we get a motion? You didn't pay attention. It was Rick and Beth though. Um, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh, seven oh.
We get flags and wave them down.
Six, yeah, red and white one, that'd be good one. I'm liking your thinking. Next up is the financial reports.
The education fund balance as of January 31st was four million, four hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. A year ago, this balance was two million, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and seven cents. The operations fund balance as of January 31st was two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. A year ago, this balance was seven hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. The investment interest earned year to date as of January 31st was two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents. This is compared to two thousand, forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents a year ago.
This item is discussion only. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, next item.
The cafeteria fund balance as of January 31st was five hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. This is compared to three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars and thirty cents a year ago. The latchkey fund balance as of January 31st was six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents. And this is compared to three thousand, six hundred and sixty, sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents a year ago.
Are there any questions?
What's, why the difference? That much difference?
Between what?
Which one?
On latchkey?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I think a lot more parents are utilizing it compared to last year. But I, I can get an enrollment update for you guys and send that out.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're starting to build that little balance because during COVID, there wasn't anybody staying.
Yeah.
So we're seeing that benefit of that now.
That's good. Any other questions?
Do we need, um, do we need, since we have a large enrollment, do we need another person? Or are we good on that?
So far, the principals have not said they're having any issues, so.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. Celebrations is the next item up. Pammy?
Because Shannon would call me if there was a problem.
That sounded ominous.
So we are doing January and February tonight because our January board meeting, we just returned from Christmas break. So Mrs. Kaiser, would you please join me up here? It's my honor to recognize Mrs. Kaiser as our January Educator of the Month. She has almost completed her 34th year of teaching at Franklin County. She spent 20 years as the student council sponsor. She spent a lot of time at Mount Carmel. Thirty years as cheerleading coach, God bless you.
Still have hair.
SCC LA advisor, where she's been that, in that role for quite some time, as long as the depart, as well as the department chair at the Family Consumer Science Department. Bachelor's degree from Purdue University. She was honored, this honor comes from a student. When asked why she should be considered, the student responded, she's a fabulous teacher and you can tell she's interested in her students' feelings. She truly cares and wants to help everyone. Overall, Mrs. Kaiser is a wonderful teacher. On her free time, I'm travel, organic gardening, and walking and exercising. I see her doing that all the time. So, I mean, we always ask our Educator of the Month, what, what do they enjoy about their job? She says, I feel fulfilled when a student emails me and writes in their words, you care about me and what goes on, so I should care about you and your family. She enjoys past students when they, especially when they come up to her and say, I still have my project when I was in your class. So, and I still have my project from when I was in school. At, I think it was a foil skirt or something. And I think, I think what she'll miss the most is her fellowship with her current staff members. And I don't know if you guys realize this or not, because it's a consent agenda item, but I think last month you approved her retirement. So she will be leaving after 34 years of teaching. So join me congratulating Mrs. Kaiser. Introduce your guests. Thank you. You want to get a picture?
What are your retirement plans?
I don't know yet.
Whatever, whatever comes to mind. Sleepy end.
It is my honor to recognize our February Educator of the Month, Mrs. Shirley Fell. She is the Reading Interventionist at Laurel Elementary. She has, completing her 38th year in education. She has her bachelor's degree from IU, her master's degree in Ball State. She's reading recovery trained from Purdue University. We got all three of them represented there. She was nominated by a parent. Two of my children had Mrs. Fell for a classroom teacher. I was so impressed with the growth of my children after their year in her classroom. She helps students feel successful by holding them accountable for meeting their true potential. Things change over the years, but good teaching is something that just can't be replaced. My children were lucky to have her as a teacher. When asked what she enjoys about her job, I enjoy working with everyone at Laurel Elementary. And I mean everyone, they're a family to me. Reading and the magic of teaching each child, I think, is what keeps coming her back every single day. And it's just, I think, I think she will, if you ask her, she will tell you that Laurel is an absolutely, absolutely magical place to teach and the best job she could ever ask for. So congratulations. And she is retiring at the end of the school year as well, so.
And her favorite saying is, when I get paid for doing what you love, I can't say that about my job.
Well, then you need to stay on and just not get paid. How about that? Next up is our Support Staff of the Month. And unlike the two younger, the young ladies who went before, they can, these two cannot retire yet. Cannot. Our January Support Staff of the Month, Mrs. Angie Westerfeld. Come up and join me. I know you could, I told you not. I was going to say, did you read that part when you signed the dotted line? Angie serves as a cafeteria manager at Franklin County Middle School. Back in 1988, she started her journey here at Franklin County Schools as a cafeteria employee and a bus driver. And then the inspiration took over and she, back in 1995 and 97, attended Ivy Tech Community College to earn her Dietary Management Certification and became a Certified Food Protection Professional. Shortly thereafter, she became the manager of the cafeteria at Franklin County Middle School and has remained there in that position for 28 years. In all, she has devoted 35 years to serving the students of Franklin County Community School Corporation. She was nominated for this honor by four individuals, including several colleagues and a student. They stated Angie always has an outstanding can-do attitude. Even when she has a lot on her plate, Angie is consistently available to help or answer any questions. She encourages others to work as hard as they can and always puts a smile on our faces. Mrs. Westerfeld has been, been managing and working in food service for a long time. Her passion for what she does and the love for her students is contagious. She, without a doubt, puts the students first and foremost, making sure they are all fed and get what they need to have a nutritious meal. Overall, Angie is hardworking and committed to what she does. Outside of school, she attends church, spends as much time as she can with her family, including her kids and grandkids. When asked what the best part of her job is, she responded, it's an amazing opportunity to have served so many students. My favorite part is seeing kids come through the cafeteria, knowing that we have served their parents at one point. Congratulations.
My husband Kevin.
I'd like to say something about Angie. I've, I have known her for a long time and I had the opportunity to go over there to the cafeteria and work with her at the cashier and it's busy. And it's, it's controlled chaos. You have done an outstanding job and I hope you're here for 28 more years.
Thank you, thank you.
How much was the register short when Rick ran it? Our February Support Staff of the Month is Ms. Kim Sizemore. She come up. Kim currently serves as a custodian at Franklin County High School in the athletic and gym area. And she has taken that over, that is hers. Do not make a mess there.
I clean it up.
In 2008, she joined Franklin County Community School Corporation as a part-time employee. Then in 2015, became full-time. In all, Ms. Sizemore has dedicated nearly 15 years to our facilities. She was nominated by, for this honor by a staff member and also administrator. When asked why Mrs. Sizemore should be considered for its recognition, they responded, Kim is flexible in her work time to ensure all events go without a hitch. Late nights, early mornings, or Sunday programs, or a call from Mr. Isaacs. In the middle of the night.
Or in the morning.
Yeah. She takes a great pride in her work and makes sure our facilities are unrivaled. The gym flooring company even commented how every school should have a Kim and commended her for the work she does. This past winter, a snow or ice storm was impending. And I gave her a call and said, hey, we might have to use this as a warming center. And I said, just be prepared. She went overboard and went home, got her stuff, came back and spent the night in the building just to make sure. So she grabbed her pillow and blanket and slept in the nursing station. I also appreciate, we have ice coming in the other day. And she texted me 10:10, 10:30 when she was leaving and said, hey, should I put, I'm gonna go ahead and put salt down because I think there's gonna be ice in the morning.
It was already slick.
And she, she took care of that. I don't have to worry about that area ever. Kim is without a doubt one of a kind and we're lucky to have her. Kim rarely has free time, but when she does, she enjoys roller skating, taking hikes in the beautiful outdoors, crocheting, and being adventurous with her grandkids. When asked what was the best part of her job, Kim says the kids. I enjoy the kids the most. They're an absolute, absolute hoot. They think I'm funny, but I think they are the hilarious ones. The kids definitely keep me young. Congratulations.
I would like to say something real quick. I mean, Kim has been there for me many, many times, including opening doors, digging my kids' toys out from under the bleachers and helping at the elementary school just a few days ago.
Or the time I would call me up at one o'clock in the morning, you locked my car in. So I put on my pink fluffy bathrobe that my son bought me as a joke and huge pink fluffy owl slippers and I went and unlocked the gate. And now I've never had anybody call me at one o'clock. I just scared them.
At this time, we would like to give the audience members a chance to leave the courtroom if you so desire or you're more than welcome to stay and listen to my monotone voice. You know, big takers, huh? Okay. We have statements from the public. We have none and a statement from employees. We have none as well. We're up to the superintendent's report.
Nope.
No superintendent's report. Thanks for the help there. Now we go to old business. None. New business? We have something, new business, right?
Yep, right, right there.
Oh. Next level program of study?
Yes. I have our Director of College and Career Readiness and our Assistant Principal. We have met, so the state of Indiana is going through some major changes for graduation requirements for high school students. They made a presentation at the Teacher Discussion Meeting, oh, cut, two or three weeks ago probably. So they have been scheduling, they're not asking for approval tonight. That will come in, at the March Board meeting because we'll have additional academic handbook changes. But I felt like it was important and both of them did as well, that you start hearing some of the changes that are, that are occurring for our students. So Mrs. Shaver will be giving her little presentation. So have at it.
Okay. So basically, yeah, there's only five slides, that's not a lot. Okay. So over the last couple of years, our counseling department has had to revamp what exactly, what means, how a student can graduate. And it isn't just graduation, like a diploma anymore. So we have our Core 40 diploma and then you can have your technical honors diploma or academic honors diploma. You can also have a general diploma, but we don't advertise that because that does limit a couple other capabilities for students. But that is an option too. But basically, what the stu, the state has changed over the recent years and 2023 is the very first year, so the senior class that has to go through these requirements, we were able to do it previous years, but this is the year that they have to start meeting all three of these requirements. And we have a lot of fun lingo that we use in our department, but we call these like boxes or buckets. So you may hear them called both of those things. But the first thing would be, obviously, they have to meet the high school diploma requirement. The second one is to learn and demonstrate employability skills. All this sounds wonderful on paper. Like now, how do we track this and figure this out? And what that can be, it could be go to the career center. It could be do an internship. It could be a student has a job on their own, they're in a sport, anything like that. And we just have to track that. That's not typically been a big issue and I think we're gonna be fine with that as well. The third one is where we kind of run into some issues, not issues, but we always have, I would say 90% of our students without a problem meet one of these. But we always have a few students at the end of every year that are struggle a little bit. And these are called, this is the third bucket, called the post-secondary ready competency. So they don't have to meet all of those that you see on that. They just have to meet one of those. So if a student's getting an honors diploma, whether it be an academic honors or technical honors diploma, that counts as one. So that marks that one off the, off the checklist for them. There's also ACT and SAT scores that they can meet for college-ready benchmarks. Honestly, being the college and career person, I think the benchmarks are pretty high. We've had some students meet those, but I would say that's typically not how most students meet them. A big majority of the way students meet them is, this last bucket would be our ASVAB test, the Military Career Inventory Test. And before this was even in place, we had students take that test regardless because for military reasons and also it's just a gr, a great career inventory test. But basically, now it's one of the graduation requirements. And most of our students meet it by that. But more and more talk is, is coming down from Indiana saying they may do away with that one. So we had to make sure we had all these other pieces in place for students to graduate in this last bucket here. The last few of these things here are state and industry recognized credentials. That's the career center. CTE courses, which is basically dual credits and getting a C and better. So those last ones are, are things like that. The one that we had not created until recently, and that's what this, rest of this presentation is about, is the locally created pathways. We had not really done that until, because again, this is the first year that the 2023 students have to meet one of these criteria. And ASVAB has been the majority of it. And we actually have a lot of students on the honors diploma as well. But a locally created pathway, we had to come up with a sequence of three different classes where students have to pass these classes. And if they are passing those three classes over the course of their high school career, that would count as the last bucket. So to go into more depth on that, and actually, this is kind of just the same thing. Well, this is, yeah, it's basically just saying the pathway. Okay, so what does this mean for us? We had to come up with three different classes and see, Mrs. Goman and I actually sat down and we had to go through all of the classes that the state of Indiana said were going to be considered pathways. We also wanted to make sure that we did not step on the toes of the career center and not take away from their pathways. So which pathways can we offer that the career center doesn't offer? But also, what can our teachers teach based off their credentials? So there was a lot of back and forth that we had to check on. And based off of what we figured out, we technically, as of today, could offer 24, 23 or 24 pathways. Now, that's not feasible because we don't have that many teachers because these are just the pathway options. These aren't our core classes or whatever else it might be. So we had to figure out, okay, out of these 24 pathways, and there might be six ag, you know, three ITE, we had to kind of figure out, going forward, if we are making students choose a pathway, what are some options that these students might choose? Right now, we'd came up with, after those 24 pathways, a good six, possibly seven, that we can start offering for next year for the incoming freshmen to basically make them choose a pathway. And the main thing we wanted to, to stress to parents and to students is this does not mean that they have to stay on this for the rest of their high school career. You know, we have a lot of, let's say, education students who take a lot of business courses or ag courses just because it opens up and makes them more well-rounded. But we don't want students to feel like they're pigeonholed into those pathways. If we see that they're doing well after their freshman year, let's say they're an AB student, let's say they plan to go to the career center, they don't have to continue on that pathway option. We just don't know that if they're gonna be that last 10% until we, until really, after the freshman year, to see what kind of students they are. So if you want to go to the next slide. The six pathways that we came, came up with, with our teachers that we have right now and the credentials that they have right now, what we can offer right now is the Industrial Technical Education Hands-on Pathway, an ag pathway, a business pathway, a medical science pathway, which is pretty cool. We didn't think we'd have something like that, computer science pathway, and an engineering pathway. So obviously, this is not every, you know, opportunity for students. But we basically are gonna be asking the incoming freshmen, pick out of these six, which ones you're most interested in? Even if it's not anything that you may want to do, that's okay, just choose one. And after freshman year, when we do the one-on-ones with the counselors and continue on with their four, four-year plan, we can figure out what maybe they can hit, you know, that last bucket by a different option. Or maybe they'll or maybe they'll find something that they like. We also want the students and the parents to know that choosing this pathway is just gonna be one course freshman year, one course junior year, one course senior year. So it doesn't take away from a lot of their other electives that they need. And as you have your junior, senior year, especially senior year, there's so many options, as students are actually, that's one reason we created our internship program, was because students are running out of classes to take and need extra electives. So I know this is all seems kind of crazy. I mean, we're always having to learn every couple years new things that the state's coming up with. We just wanted to make sure we had all our ducks in a row, that if something goes away with the ASVAB, or we have to have students meet every possible way that they can for bucket three, they have this option as well. There are also possibility futures of a fax pathway. If we have hired another fax teacher, since Ms. Kaiser is retiring. And then we also get questions about, I know our music department, since we have this amazing music suite, is, you know, what about us? And we want to tell the students that there is options in the schedules for students to choose a pathway and still have band or choir, whatever it might be. We can create other pathways, but this is something we had to do within the last couple weeks. We just have to go and do some more research about that. And there are, it has to get approval from the state, and there's a lot more steps for that. So there probably can be a lot more pathways in the future, but we will have to get the teachers on board because I think there's more that they have to do when it comes to. It's a portfolio, yeah, so the teachers have to actually have more, the kids do more when it comes to that, so it would change their curriculum. But we just don't want to think that there's gonna be one, that we're misleading kids, like, don't go to music, or whatever it might be. There's still plenty of options that they could choose, an ag pathway, and then also do band, if that makes sense. The changes that could be coming, there's a lot more talk about trades and businesses and apprenticeships, which we have been on board since I've started. You know, we don't only push college, I want everyone to know that. That's been the case for the past ten years or so, and we've doubled numbers at the career center. So that has, it's coming down more and more from the state that there are gonna be changes. I did mention that we're not taking over any of the, these are just the pathways that we're offering, but the career center, if a student goes there, there's so many more options they can take as well. But also, there's changes every single year, so we could be presenting again next year on something else. These are the new things that we had to revamp this year, and we're changing with our scheduling process. But for the incoming freshmen, we will, in case you hear some talk about pathways, and I feel like pathways is such a loose term. We hear it from other people, and it means something different to us, but in case you hear why we're making incoming freshmen, or possibly even freshmen that be, going to be sophomores, choose a certain class, that would, this would be why.
So everybody would be dropped in a principal's class based on the pathway that they choose, right?
Correct.
And they have to be successful on each of those courses to continue on that pathway? Or they can double up in a class?
They can double up.
Okay.
It depends on, I believe, the pathway. It does, because some classes can be prerequisites, and some have to be, can be at the same time, or. Some can be within two years, some can be within three. For example, the kids that go to the career center, they take everything within one year.
Right.
So theirs are a little bit different as well. And we can map that out and see if a student after a freshman year is like, I'm just not interested in this, and I really want to do a lot of four languages or business, and we see you are an AB student even, that's fine. We can opt you out of the pathway, and then you can take the electives that you wish after that.
Because most of those courses are dual credit, correct?
Correct.
In the pathways.
I would say we're about seventy percent.
Seventy.
Yeah.
Okay, so pathways. All students, low students, middle students, high students, they can do this?
Correct.
I mean, not that they have to, but they can do this. This is not gonna put a great big barrier in front of a student that just really doesn't want to be there and just really doesn't care. And you keep saying ABC students, what about the CD?
Correct, and that's where we said the seventy percent with dual credit. We had to come up with a pathway or two, and we might come up with more for the students who are not good test takers, who do not go to the career center, who are not ABC students. We're gonna have some pathways that are not dual credit, and we have some hands-on. We have some ag courses that a lot of these students do really well in, but they just do not pass the ASVAB, or don't want to go to the career center. So we think we have, by what we came up with, a pretty good mix for a lot of students, for all types of students. Because I would say there's always about ten students at the end of every graduating class that we're really struggling to like graduate and meet that last bucket, as we call it. We think this is going to make it much more, more opportunities for them, and we'll know by the end of their junior year too. So rather than the end of senior year, where we're trying to, come on, you gotta take these tests and pass them for all the state-regulated tests. This, I feel like, will be more ahead of the game, and I think they can also take multiple pathways, so we can try a different, a couple different things with them.
So if they drop the ASVAB, you don't think they're gonna get anything from the military? Any squawking? I mean, I just can't see the military letting us to drop that.
Well, I don't think the military, so we used to give it prior to it being a regulation with the state of Indiana. Now, it is pretty hard. It's, I have to struggle, and I get, try to get the test pretty far in advance, and they used to have people come and actually administer the results to them. They don't do that anymore since so many schools now are offering it. I think the military is actually annoyed that this is a state-mandated graduation requirement now, because they know that ninety-five percent of these kids do not want to go to the military, you know? So in hindsight, I mean, on paper, this all looks great, but that's really where the counselors come in, and what do you want to do? What is beneficial to you? Do you want to go to trade? Do you want to go to the military? You know, so they want to, they want to make sure that they're ready with any type of post-secondary readiness, whatever that might be. And I get what they're saying, let's try the ASVAB, let's try CTE courses, let's try a pathway, academic honors, but, I mean, there's just some kids who are, who struggle with everything.
This is gonna hit like, you're not a career center kid. You're not an academic honors kid. You're like, these are things you don't do, how else can you, and you're an awful test taker. So let's say you're like a CD average kid, but you're none of those things. These pathways hit those students. Again, like she said, that's only maybe ten percent of our kids. But we're looking at their stuff right now going, oh no, what are we gonna do? Because we're not prepared to hit those ten percent of those kids until we put these in place.
And right now, what we're doing is, we have, we used to give the ASVAB once a year. Now we give it twice a year, junior year and senior year. We've also meet with other schools, and we've now put our dates separately. So like, we just had a kid go to Batesville. We've had a kid go to East Central, so we could, because you can give it every thirty days. So now we're working with other schools, like, maybe they'll have five different options per year. But that's ultimately, that, and these aren't kids that necessarily want to go to the military. They're just trying to graduate high school. So we're trying to do our best, but it's, you know, there's, it is, it is.
I know you said the pathway is really only gonna be about ten percent of the kids, but I don't really expect the answer, but just a thought, what if one of those six is just overfilled with kids?
That's a great question.
Do we have the teachers or time for that? On the flip side, what if two of them, nobody signs up for? Can you then go and offer a different one? What's the process or timeframe to get something approved?
So, okay, that's a great question. So we just started scheduling, and actually tomorrow's our last day for scheduling with the eighth graders. What we had, we only had our current eighth graders, going to be freshmen for next year, sign up for these pathways, and what I asked them to do is rank first, second, and third. So if no one chooses computer science or whatever, then we'll put them in the second. Because it will base, all of our scheduling requests are always based off of, I think, kids think, oh, this is gonna be set in stone. This isn't, this is based off of, let's see how many requests we get, how many teachers can offer it. You know, if we only have two kids that sign up for psychology, which is, usually isn't the case, we're not gonna offer psychology. So that's the same thing with the pathways. So, and this is just trial and error for the first year. We may have to see, and hopefully, maybe in the future years, we'll have more pathways to offer. But we thought this was at least a pretty good variety for what we could offer with the teachers we had. And then, yes, I guarantee we're gonna have some kids that might not be able to get into the, their number one choice, but hopefully they can get to number two or three.
So this is just almost like an elective.
Correct.
Correct. It's a pathway, it's a, I don't know. It's a pathway, but it is, but it's a directed one. It's a directed path.
So you're not gonna go take basket weaving, you're gonna do something toward.
However, that would be very interesting.
Yes, it would.
I think it's three electives that go together.
Right.
Not just three random electives.
Correct, they're in sequence. Like, they all start with a principal's course. And then from there, like, the computer science, for instance, it goes principals of computing, computer science one, computer science two. But some of them, you can take the second and third course at the same time. So if a kid starts a pathway later, they can finish it in two years.
Wonder if they don't finish it?
Then we gotta find another way for them to graduate.
But they are two semester courses, not just one semester.
They're all one year.
One year. Now, there is change with that too. We do have the possibility, if we are struggling with trying to get kids done within the three years, we can get approval from the state, and I think there's something that our other counselor would have to write up and get approved, but we can get a year class taught into a semester. So there is an option to make those smaller.
It's a waiver we have to fill out for the school.
How long, how long do we have to track them at, once they graduate?
Does that just change, doesn't it?
We are just trying to now get tracking. We're going to have with this class more materials to graduate through the clearinghouse that are through colleges and stuff, but also, I don't know, that's only through colleges. I don't think military, if they're in the workforce.
Do we have to track them?
No.
No?
So there probably is legislation out there.
Because I heard, I heard that that was gonna be.
I just don't know how they're going to.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can do it.
We, so my first year, the 2015, 16 year, and at that point, I just tried to get contact information from students. You know, I, my first year, like, I'm going absolutely stay in touch with all these kids. I think five emailed me back, or called me back. And that was just personal information. And then we've tried to use Naviance and a couple other things. And this one, I used to work with the clearinghouse on the college side, so I know they can track the enrollment, but that would just be from colleges.
Yeah.
So I don't know when it comes to workforce and military.
Yeah, I don't know how, you know, if they make it mandatory, we track them for six months to a year. I don't know how you're gonna do it. But I've, I've heard that that's, that's coming.
I heard it was a year.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard, but.
Yep. It's ridiculous, but.
Not to talk about the dad, but Mr. Holberg did that all the time. He tracked them for four years. If y'all don't know who he is, he's a counselor that was here for many, 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 well, fifty years. So, but he did, I mean, he tracked those kids.
Okay, so I can wrap my mind around this. Let's say Grant is a freshman, and he selects one of the pathways. Grant used to be a CD student, not that great of a student, sorry, Grant, throwing you under the bus. But he takes, he decides to buckle down, he starts doing well, and he takes the ACT, the SAT, is PSAT one of those?
ASVAB.
ACT and SAT are quite options.
And he just scores astronomically. Is he released from having to take the other pathway course?
Yes. If he wants to opt out of it, but yes.
Oh, he does?
Yes.
Okay, then, just so I can clarify it for me, because I was pulling from everyone's questions, and it was answering, I think, mine. So it's not that every freshman is required, it's those that would meet this criteria of the CD students, or even the BC students, that they need to take a pathway?
It's for those that don't meet any of the other criteria.
ACT.
Every freshman will start with a pathway.
That's what I have down.
We'll start with a pathway, and then after we see them and start to talk with them to figure out, are you the AB student? Are you the CD student? If a student is that AB and saying, I'm an honors diploma, or if we know a kid is definitely going to the career center, those kids then at that point can pull out of there.
Thank you, that's what I had written down, but I just had to make sure I was catching it in the right way.
We honestly don't know. I mean, I would say we probably can tell our freshmen after the first semester what kind of, if they're gonna be the students that we're trying to really get to graduate.
I think it's great.
So just by making them, but if we truly have a very, I mean, there's gonna be case-by-case basis. We have a very determined, I'm going to Yale, and I want to take band, choir, you know, foreign language and all this, we might not put that person in a pathway. But obviously, it's gonna be case-by-case. That's not our general rule, we're going to try to put everyone in a pathway, but I would say there's gonna be, you know, case-by-case options on that.
Do you fear some of the pushback from some of the parents that are going to say, yes, my child is going to be in band, choir, and so forth and so on?
We haven't had that yet, tomorrow.
We talked about it, we talked about it a little bit, but if, let's say a parent comes in and they are, you know, you are not going into a pathway. I would think at some point, we could have something basically, like, right now, we have signed things by parents that say, this kid's going to go in the Core Forty, we're dropping them to the general. That is a parent decision. That parent signs off on that, and we keep that in a notebook at our school. So to me, if a kid, if a parent is saying, no, 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 I think we will probably at some point get some form of form that says opting out, parent's signature, and I think we can put that in the book. Because we have to cover ourselves here.
Yes, yes. What's, what's it gonna look like on their diploma? Nothing? It's just gonna be a requirement?
Our transcripts have to change a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, Toby's gonna.
I know, I know.
We have to have one of these boxes, all of those buckets have to have now a spot on our transcript, and we have to scroll down at the end of each year and check which one they hit. And then the state has to verify that that happened.
And to go back to your point with the, I mean, if we have a freshman who didn't take a pathway, if they're not doing great after their freshman year, they still have the sophomore, junior, senior year to take that pathway. If they're failing their courses, I think we would have leverage at that point to be like, to the parent, hey, they failed these courses, we need to get them on a pathway.
Sounds good.
You guys have done an outstanding job, and I feel sorry for you.
It's a crappy time, man, it's not, I feel like it's not getting any better.
Yeah.
It's mostly one thing, it changes.
Well, wait till after the legislature closes this year.
That's what we're, we don't want to learn one thing and then have to learn another one.
What they've, what they're putting out now is just ridiculous.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff floating out there right now, and if all that happens, I think education as itself is completely going to be different.
Yeah.
It really is.
Yeah, yeah.
Done.
It's like they're, they're trying to do away with public education.
Yes.
That's exactly what it is.
I don't, I think, yeah.
Yep. Are there any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it.
Next up will be recommendations for an investment trust.
I brought to the board last week the option for the Indiana Trust. And my recommendation tonight is to, I would like to recommend a million dollars to put into the invest, into the Indiana Trust account to receive a higher interest. Now, I provided a little packet for you guys tonight. So these are kind of just snapshots from the website. So you can see not only the daily yield, you can see the daily dividend as of yesterday. You can also see the year chart that is there. Now, the FCN bank balance that I have printed out for you, this is where I would recommend taking the money from. So our FCN bank account that we use is mainly designated for our education fund. Now, accounting aside, our school is allowed to, you are allowed to have all of your cash balance in one account. We have ours spread out across, just for an additional resource of accounting purposes. We have our one at First Financial that mainly operates our operations fund. This one is mainly our education fund. However, there are other things that contribute to this, which I discussed at the January board meeting. What I have presented here kind of shows a beginning bank balance, what we typically see as a deposit, and what we typically see as checks cleared, and our ending bank balance for the month. These are for the past seven months. And so my recommendation of taking a million dollars from this checking account and taking it to Indiana Trust and investing it there would leave us with a healthy balance still remaining in this FCN account. Now, that being said, please do remember that the Indiana Trust is a completely liquid account, so we can transfer it back at any time if, if we need to. I don't see that coming, but if we need to. The last page is just a tool that was available on the website based off of the returns that they have seen. If this is a month. If this is a month, um, interest that we could have earned off of a million dollars. I know.
Go on.
Nope, go ahead.
I'm gonna ask you one more thing.
Yes, yes.
Since this says Indiana, what's it say, Indiana whatever, Trust Fund, Indiana Daily Trust Fund, or whatever.
Yes.
There is no way that the state can come over to this fund and take stuff out because they have used some of teachers' retirement like they did years ago?
No.
They can't touch this?
No.
Correct?
No. This is completely owned and operated by Franklin County Community School Corporation. It is, it runs under all of our stuff. There's no way that it is interconnected at all.
So the state, the state can't touch this?
No.
Good.
Yeah, they're a nightmare.
I know that there were a lot of questions, so a few things I kind of want to reiterate that I have found out over the last week. One thing that I know that we discussed was setting a, um, a trigger amount to be withdrawn if it got down to a balance. That option is not available through them, so this is something that I will monitor daily. And I am proposing that I will send weekly updates to the board of how the account is doing, what the interest has been on average for that week, just to keep everyone up to date. But no, the trigger amounts, per se, is not an, um, an option.
What, what amount would you propose for a trigger amount?
Um, that is a little hard. So it's hard to say. If we were to put a million dollars, um, this account has never seen a loss, or this company, I guess, as a lack of a better word, has never seen a loss. So that doesn't mean that the returns may not come down, so we may not be earning as much, because we all know that the interest rates haven't really spiked here over the last year. I don't foresee that lasting for the next years. Um, I don't know. I would consult with Tammy, Keith. I would consult with the board, but I would say if I even saw it trending at all, I would reach out to everyone and consult with the board and with Tammy and Keith.
Okay, alright. Any other questions?
Did you?
I, there were a few other things, yep. So.
She's gonna probably answer it.
Um, we had also talked about, um, gains or losses, and how that looks as far as the company kind of making their money. It is a nonprofit, because it is state-run. They do not seek a profit from all of these investments. So any of their fee, which I found out, is a point one percent of the returns, is done before the return is given. So, for example, as of yesterday, the daily yield was four point five, um, four. It was actually four point six. So that came right off the top. Now, I did ask if the return was flat, what does that look like? And they said that if it is flat, they readjust their fees to maybe not take out so much, or they have never actually had a flat return either. You can see off the chart, a year ago, it was point one percent return, which I know is very low, but if you remember, all interest rates around that time were about like that from a banking standpoint. Um, so they were actually receiving a point two percent return. They, it may have been a little bit different, because I think they did state that if the returns do drop, they kind of readjust their fees. But it has, it never goes over the point one percent that. And that is for, I did find out, that is for the salary and, um, and rent for building for their one office staff that they have, that she is the contact for, the state of Indiana, and for any research or market that they do as a company. So they research all of the commercial paper, the banks that they use, the, um, money markets. They, that point one percent goes towards all of that.
Is that point one percent figured daily, or from transaction to transaction?
Daily.
Like, if we have one day of gain and one day of loss, and it's a wash for us, are they still gonna take point one percent of that day we gained? And I know that's getting a little deep, and point one percent's not a whole lot, but I'm just curious when you said that.
I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Anything else?
Um, what other questions? Yep, go ahead. Ask me again.
No caps on?
No, there's no caps.
Gains or losses?
The one thing I also did find out, sorry, I'm cutting you off. Um, so they, they really invest in three different buckets, per se. Um, the majority of them is, are Indiana banks. Um, is fifty percent or more of the portfolio is Indiana banks. So that is money markets, um, deposit rates. So that is insured by, the state has their own insurance policy. It's the public depository insurance fund that ensures that portion of the portfolio. About ten to twenty percent is federal money, so the treasury. So that is, and I may butcher this, and I apologize, she said it is insured by the full faith US government, full faith, full faith insurance of the US government. That's what she told me. The other, about thirty percent is commercial paper. So that is, um, about the riskiest part of the portfolio that is not insured, per se.
So the commercial paper is not FDIC insured, but the other half is?
Correct, yep. Um, so, I mean, you know, if you think about FDIC, so all of our money, technically, right now, um, it sits in banks, um, that they technically only cover up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so the majority of our money is not insured, if you wanna look at it that way. So it's kind of the same risk level as far as it just sitting in a bank right now. I am also, um, I am recommending a million dollars, but if, um, there is any sort of discussion that would like to happen around that figure, please feel free as well.
My thought is, I know you're going to be watching it daily, by every other day, whatever, but I'd still like to set some sort of an automatic that, hey, if, if it gets down to this, we're out, or, you know, pull it without having to wait for a meeting or anything.
Right.
Whether that's, whether that's a five percent loss or whatever, just some kind, some kind of a parameter.
I think she said that, that when it, if it's, if she sees the trend going down, that we don't take a loss, if she sees it going down, she's gonna pull it out.
Without coming back and having border.
So I want that part of the motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would mean if you see it go down a tick, we're out. And I, I mean, I don't know, gotta have some patience.
Right. And, and I understand, like I said.
And I don't see it happening based on what, yeah.
They have never, yep. So they've never seen a loss. Now, that doesn't mean that the returns won't maybe go down. Um, so we may not be earning quite as much as right now, but, um, they have never seen a loss necessarily. So hopefully, I think.
How long they've been in existence?
Over sixteen years. Um, so they've, they've been through, um, market changes, that's for sure. But like I said, it, it is all short-term, um, commercial paper that lasts about thirty days. And they said that it's, the thirty days isn't even, if they even see something questionable, they pull out of that investment. They don't wait for a bad quarter. They, that, when that thirty days, that thirty-day investment, they would pull it out. So they, they're constantly flipping through commercial paper to make sure that they are getting the best investment as well.
So, um, I, I think Kevin's got a good idea here, but do we wanna go percentage-wise? Do we wanna go money-wise? I mean, if we go down three thousand dollars, do we wanna pull it? I'm not saying that. I'm just giving that as a, as a scenario. Do we, if we go down ten percent, do we pull it? Do, I mean, I think we all kinda need to.
I would say if, if she's seeing a trend down, then we pull it.
Yeah.
Because hopefully, we're making money. We don't wanna go below what we're.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think to take it a little further, it's just an initial parameter. So say for the first two months, and we watch it, and if we've made some gains, then we can come back and say, okay, now let's set our, our bar that if we get back to our initial investment, we're out, you know. It, if it, right now, it's a huge upswing for this, but if it levels out or starts teetering back and forth on a daily basis, then we don't wanna just jump out, jump ship immediately.
Who knows what's gonna happen?
Right. And there again, the two, three-month timeframe of testing the waters and coming back, if it is going the way we hoped, then we look at putting more in there.
Well, I think, too, each, each week that we get our statement from you, or whatever's going on, we can't panic, because in seven days, it, it might go down three thousand dollars.
There, there are types of investments, though. You're not going to see that kind of decline.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah, they're, they're really safe investments, is why they've never lost.
Yeah, this thing's basically.
In today's world, you don't know.
This thing's basically structured like a money market fund. And I was just looking, prior to 2008, in the history of money market funds, three of them broke the buck, which means they went below, they valued those off a dollar in assets, and only three of them had ever gone below the dollar in assets up to 2008. 2008 got wacky. Probably this thing's not gonna go crazy unless you have an event like that, in which case, yeah, you're gonna wanna pull the trigger and get the heck out of it and sit. And this has run so conservatively, I'm sure, probably, well, 2008 didn't tip it.
Right.
So the odds of the city in another 2008 event are relatively low.
Well, I'm very concerned about the state of our affairs in the United States right now.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's going to happen. Therefore, I don't, you know, I don't have a problem setting a.
Right.
A, a parameter. I don't think we're gonna hit, hit it, but if it's there, we have it.
Safety relief valve. I agree with you.
Yeah.
Randy, you've been quiet. Let's hear from you.
Put a couple percent on it or something, if it goes below the principal.
Yeah. Go low.
I, I, I just, you know, she, she's gonna monitor this every day. And by doing that every day, you're gonna see a trend going up and down, up and down. And if she sees it starts going down, I have enough confidence that she, she's gonna do something. You know, she's not gonna, uh.
We want this to be successful.
Yes.
We wanna make some money.
My guess is if it goes, we're gonna have news, it's gonna be like 2008, like Lehman Brothers, it's gonna be all over the news again. So it's not like it's gonna sneak out.
Yeah, thanks for the cheery spot there.
Yeah.
I feel confident.
We need a motion.
We need a motion?
Yeah, I do, too.
I feel, it's, I feel confident. I do.
Motion is Brandy's confidence.
I am. I'm confident about it.
I move that we invest, um, a million dollars in this, um, I know, that's a lot of money in it.
You have to remember, though, it's liquid and compounded daily.
I agree. It's still our money.
Okay, is that the only part of the motion?
No, nobody let me talk.
Speak.
So, um, into this, um, what do we call this? What is this?
Invest trust.
Invest trust? And that we, um, give Kendra our, um, uh, our good thoughts and, and hope that she will, which she will, um, watch it. And we want this to be a money-making project. So if it goes, um, the other way, we need to have her take care of that without a board meeting. Is that good?
Yes.
A sec.
Take that up.
Yeah, I'm really not sure if I can take that one up.
Yeah, she can. I know I interrupted you now.
I'll second. Nobody else has.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. Second it. So we have, uh, first, uh, second. Kevin, all in favor? Raise your right hand.
And thank you for getting all those answers.
Yeah, thank you. Kendra did a lot of work.
My job.
Yeah, this week. Um, the next up on the agenda is the recommendation for our farmland rental for the next three years.
Um, last board meeting, I asked for permission to advertise. That did happen. Um, we only received, um, one bid for the twenty-five acres, um, that we own off of Smith Road. So I'm asking the board to accept the bid from Doug Brunns for three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Is that per annum, or is that total?
Per year.
Any discussion?
Motion to accept?
Is there a second? Katie has a second. All in favor? Raise your hand. Uh, now, next up is the recommendation for our 2023 mowing.
Yes, we sent out sixteen, to sixteen vendors. It also went viral through Facebook, and we received five proposals back. I'm recommending white oak lawn care for this season, uh, three hundred and seventy-five dollars per cut at Laurel, three twenty-five at Mount Carmel, and six fifty at the Brookfield campus. That also includes the weed eating trimming.
Any discussion? Is there a motion? Rick makes the motion. Is there a second? Is that you, Grant, or Brandy?
That's me.
Oh, Brandon was. All in favor? Raise your hand. Rick, did you vote yes or no? Okay. Next up will be the lawn care and landscape maintenance.
Yes, this is, we're spraying the lawns and then the landscaping. We sent out proposals to seven vendors. We only had one submitted proposal. I think that's a lot due to the regulations and licensing to be able to do that. Um, I'm recommending Get Green Lawn Care. They've done it the past several years, um, for an amount of twenty-two thousand. That is five hundred dollar increase from last year. But about, uh, it's backed up to twenty-two thousand. Two years ago, it was twenty-two thousand. We, so it's, we got it down, so we came back.
Are we gonna get some new plants with this money?
I will be sending you the FFA Ag Department's proposal on plants and landscaping for in front of the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac. I appreciate that.
Is that in front of where the cafeteria is? Is that what they're?
The cafeteria, um, outside the guidance area, and then the front office. Those are places where I took out bushes that bad people would hide behind, so.
We're gonna put more bushes back up. Now it's flowers.
They won't put that tall in mind.
Right.
We're looking for a motion. Rick, who's second? Anyone? Kevin? All in favor? Here's Grant. Is Grant there? Grant, are you fa, in favor of this?
In favor of what? Before I say.
Landscaping.
Sorry. Yes, I'm in favor of that.
There goes my chance to take over the world. Um, okay, next up will be the, was that the K two literacy?
Yes, we are moving away from reading interventionists in all buildings. Um, I've talked about this at teacher discussion. State of Indiana is moving towards science of reading. Um, we, um, have gotten in, I hope, that we will be receiving grants for all three of our buil, buildings to be trained this summer, this literacy coach. Um, I believe the first year, the grant pays two-thirds of the salary. The second year, they pay a third. Um, they'll come in and evaluate our current reading materials. Um, we've already got a jump on that. We know there's some phanemic awareness, um, issues, so we've purchased Hegarty curriculum to offset that little gap in our materials. Um, so we have moved forward with moving some people around already. Um, we know who our literacy coaches potentially will be for next year. Um, we need to see how kindergarten enrollment goes, where everybody will fall. Um, but I need approval of a job description as part of the grant. And that was, this job description was written by the Department of Ed and SELL. Um, so you have to follow that to a T if you're gonna receive the grant money. So, asking for approval.
Is there any discussion?
Is that one coach per?
Per building, yes.
Okay.
K two. K-2. They only work with K-2, K-32 teachers.
Any questions? Looking for a motion? Rick and Katie, all in favor, raise your hand. Next up is the 2023, 2024 catastrophic accident insurance. Yes, I'm recommending we purchase catastrophic accident insurance from Guaranteed Trust Life Insurance Company. The rates will remain the same as last year. We've had this every year that I've been here and before that. This is for in case of catastrophe on the football field. We had one in the weight room a few years back. Young lady dropped some weights on her head, had to be lifelined. This kind of covers this for that. It is actually a little bit lower because some of it is based off the number of students. So we're down a few students, so it goes down a little bit. This is recommended through our insurance, our liability insurance agent, Paul Monster. Any discussion?
So moved.
Beth makes a motion. Second, anyone? Was that you, Brandy?
I was.
It's Brandy right there. All in favor, raise your hand.
It's moved, Bill.
Okay, where is he?
Your other.
Bill, we're gonna move you up on the agenda unless you object. Are you sure? I mean, he'll accommodate you.
Yes, to go home and run that baby.
I thought it would be very tricky.
Okay, so that's, what part are we on there?
Other.
The other.
He's here representing the redevelopment commissioner.
There you are, Bill. Floor's yours.
So what I'm up to is, is that the commissioners had put that proposal in place that we're going to be using 15% of the money that's captured from our Tiff district, from our, from our Golden Road Tiff district to be used for the, for educational purposes. And earmark, we'll have to earmark that. We've, I think we've had that discussion or talked about that in the past. One of my points I made, I think, in one of the meetings briefly, I touched on was that we had, we, we, through some meetings that I've been engaged in with other communities and engineering firms, discussing things that are going on around Franklin County and around the state of Indiana and different programs. And one of the things we are looking at is promoting our school system in some way or form.
Market, marketing.
Marketing the school system, marketing the school system to a certain degree. And we have tossed this idea. I'm involved with the Chamber of Commerce, involved with some community council, involved with a lot of different groups and organizations. And when we bounced this idea out there, we've had some response, some groups respond. They would also be interested in contributing to that if we could put something in play. And so I want to say we're at a point where I just call it brainstorming for 30 days or something to determine this. So I guess my point was, there's roughly $7,500 earmarked for this program or for this, for the educational program from, from this money. And we may have other people who are interested in donating to that fund if it was used for the purpose of, of
Marketing the school.
Our school system. And so we don't know whether we can accomplish this or what level we had tried to accomplish this. I will be meeting later this week with the College Coalition group. And I thought it would be something I'll bring up there. It was something I wanted to bring up at a community council meeting, and I missed it the other day, and I'm not sure if it was brought up or not. But we just would like to take the next, I'm gonna say 60 days, so I don't put myself, but I'd hope to be able to come up with something quicker. But we'd like to take some time to talk amongst ourselves or amongst some groups, organizations, school board, welcome to be a part of it, whatever, to determine if it's of interest or if it's, one option, one idea that's come from this whole thing was, do we have something to sell? And so did we go out and seek a third party, a different opinion, not your opinion, not the people's opinion, a third party to look in and say, where are the strengths, where are the weaknesses? When I started looking to see if there's anybody out there who actually does that, I think it's gonna come with a price tag, something we can't afford. And so then I backed up for a minute and I look at some of the success stories. Actually, I'm not a big fan of newspaper observer and all that other stuff. But I seen today in the Observer, a whole bunch of comments about success stories, let's just say, from the school system. And so the manner in which we're getting that word out to the public, I'm not sure. They sure hear all, they hear, if something bad happens, they hear it. When something good happens, maybe they don't want to hear it. I'm not sure what that issue is there, but I believe that in an effort to populate our community, which is what this redevelopment program and part of our Res, our Reservoir Hill project, and we've got other projects going that were there on the table. These people look at our school system and say, what is it that we've got going on here? And is this something we're interested in placing ourselves in that area, work, school, whatever it may be, place of living? We've got the work issue. We can, we can get you, we can get you within 20 to 30 minutes to a good job. Our place of, I will say, that's not the word, place of living, but I guess I don't know what the word is actually. But our, our two acre lots, our three acre lots, our open space, our Brookville Lake, our, our Main Street, our whole outlier of Franklin County is top notch. Our school system has been questioned by some, and I think it's false information. And so the question is, is there a means of Facebook, which is dangerous in all directions? I don't know. I'm not, I'm not a marketing guru by any means. But I just feel like if we had some of those people, that may exist. I've got a couple people that have come to my mind.
Yeah, first find out what the cost is gonna be for someone to market to a school corporation. One thing, one place they need to look into is real estate. Because when you go to a real estate website and you look down and it has a place for school in this area and you click on it, and I did that sometimes, and it didn't give our school a very good rating. And that's, I think I had this conversation with Dr. Howe, that we need, that's one area that we need most to look at.
To determine where that factor came in.
Yeah, and and each, each one of the real estate.
Based on test scores.
It is.
That's when you click on it and it will give you the test scores and like the A, B, C, D, E, or A, B, C, like rating. And that's what people a lot of times will look at, and then it'll like give you a star rating underneath that. But I do think that there's other ways to market besides that. I think that our school, like you said, you know, I'm born and raised here. So automatically, I'm gonna tell you this is the best place to live. But I do think, you know, there is a lot of negative feedback on Facebook. And I, I believe that if people start sharing the good things that our school's doing and the good things that the kids are accomplishing, that, that it could, it can overweigh the negativity that people see. I have people reach out to me all the time, and I feel like if you're honest with these people and you, you have those facts to back up what you're saying, whether they want to argue or they're questioning an attendance policy or something like that, and you send them that policy and they know that you're being very, you're, you're respect, you're respecting, you know, what they have to say. I, I think that you can market and spend very minimal amount. It's just the word of mouth and the way that you choose to portray what you're saying about the school.
Bill, Gage Pace, you know him. He's, I think he's come to you also, the Franklin County Redevelopment. He's been with us several times, Brookville Redevelopment. And what he is doing is he's trying to sell our Main Street program. In fact, that's what he's employed as in Lawrenceburg. And we even thought about before, I think it was like at the end of the summer, that he was interested in getting some of our stuff up and running around here. We didn't have the money to, Brookville Redevelopment didn't have the money that he wanted to help us. But what I'm trying to say here is you said a lot of money. I think if we talk to Brian, do you know him?
Yes.
Okay.
What Brian are we talking about?
You know all of them.
Okay.
Brian, I have a.
No, 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 Brian pays.
I know Gage.
All right, Gage, Gage, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Gage works with Dearborn One and he's
Yes, yes.
He attends all the RADI meetings that I attend and also is part of the I-70 or the state road one corridor.
Yes, yes, yes. And I think he would be a great help. And he, he would tell us, I mean, he's a IU graduate in this area, I mean, in, in this field.
Absolutely.
So.
I was at a meeting two, or last week at Skyline in the morning. And I want to say that that gentleman brought a, a 30 or 25-year-old idea to the table that all of us 50-year-old ideas, it was interesting to get that perspective from Gage. And there's a gentleman here on Main Street and who handled, who, the hilltop place of Ball, Brandon Ball.
Brandon Ball.
And I've worked with him with Google myself, is trying to work some Google projects. And so I think we do have, my thought was is can we get a, I would say a committee, but my point is I'm interested. I don't know this, but I'm interested in saying, can we get 12 people together that might tell us you want 12 more people or you want four other people or who it was, maybe people may be. I just can't do it overnight, but I do believe in the next 60 days, I could be able to come back and say, hey, we've got an idea if it's something you all were interested in. And it may come at no expense. It may come at a great expense. I have no idea just yet what, and it may come at three different levels. I just think that in an effort from an economic development standpoint that I'm involved in.
Exactly.
I have to sell those houses, Rick.
Yep.
And if that number is affecting people, I need to address that. Or if it's just a matter of making sure this word is in the right place to make it happen.
Or if they get the right, if they get the right information.
Correct, correct. There's, there's, there's bad information and it moves way faster than any good information does around here.
Well, I see that's.
I've been accused of being vague, and I have to be vague in some cases because if I tell you I've got plan A, B, and C, and we can pick from one of the three, tomorrow when I pick up the paper, we'll be doing B.
Yeah.
And there won't be anything. So I, quite often, I'll come across as bad and accused of that. And I'll admit to it too, because I want to leave all my options out. I don't want to take that career path that says I'm going this way and then find out halfway through it. I want to divert. I want to be able to divert without somebody saying, you told me that sewer line was gonna go up here and turn right, and instead it went left. Well, it went left because I hit a rock in the road and I couldn't go that way. Well, now I'm a liar. And so I just like to, to keep that open, but we, we are definitely all on the same team. And I know that in order for us to grow our community, we need to have a school system in place. And I believe it might, very well may, very well be there, okay? It's just, we've gotten a bad apple that all of a sudden popped up on the front of everything and so.
Well, you know, last year, we graduated over half the class with college credits. And then we had how many with four-year, or a two-year degree? I mean.
And I've heard that story.
Yep.
Looked to try and find out, and maybe it's a case of it's on your website or it's where those information is. And I, and I don't think it's where we need it to be. Or it could be that I'm just totally wrong, and it don't matter where you put it. Unless you grab somebody by the nose of the ear and stick them in it, they're not gonna see it because they don't want to see it. That might be our case. I don't know.
Well, I think communication in this community is poor, unless it's Facebook and who knows what that's gonna say.
I had someone today tell me that we should eliminate Brookville chatter. I've been there once. I've been there once because I heard I was mentioned there.
Yeah.
But I didn't know anything about it. I ain't going there, okay? But I just know that there's a lot of.
Everybody gets blasted on Brookville chatter.
So if we can just keep the positive momentum and block the rest of it out. And so with that being said, if it's, if I, I mean, I just came here basically to say, don't go spend my $7,500 yet. I might have another idea, okay? So at the same time, if we're all on the same page, I'll keep the loop, keep, keep in the loop with you guys so I can relay what I'm finding out or what my group is finding out. I'll help put that group together. You're welcome to be a part of that group. And when that, we get that all in play, I'll keep you guys up to speed, if that's okay.
Does Gage work with you, Franklin County?
No, Gage works for Dearborn County.
Well, but see, he, he wanted to be on our payroll too and we're part-time.
We will, we will get him to volunteer.
I was gonna, I was gonna mention Brandy's.
So I'm really for a motion.
As well. I think we also need to take a look at our websites. If somebody's looking to move here, that's where they're gonna go first.
They don't know. People don't know that we have dual credit classes. I mean, I, sporting events and stuff like that, because my daughter's in high school, I can talk to people from Union County or East Central. And they'll tell us all these, and the, the parents are just there like, oh, this sounds so great. Why don't we, we do, I'm like, we do have it. So I do think that, you know, putting things on our website and stuff like that could probably be utilized a little bit better.
I guess what we're looking for is consent here. Does anyone disagree that we need to market our school?
I'm sorry?
Does anyone disagree?
Disagree that we don't need to market our school.
We need to market it, yes.
I think that we need to market it, and I think one question that comes to mind is how are you marketing, you know, the, the new development? And I, I realize that what you're going to say, because it's going to be by signs, it's gonna be in the newspaper and such. But the one thing, and I know we need to get it on our website, but the one thing that hit us a few years ago driving back from seeing my husband's folks up in Richmond, as we were traveling into Franklin County, there was a large billboard and it was advertising Union County schools and how wonderful they were. And then the website was on the bottom. I mean, you have to get their attention first to get them to go to the, to the website. But it wasn't just coming down 101. It was also coming in from one. There, and what Union County said was, we have great facilities. We're accepting students from all corporations. And it was right on our line. I was very offended.
Coming 252 from, I think Grant, you come that direction, probably come in 252 and now Joe.
Yeah.
And is that cop, I test her over there that way, and I'm like, that's pretty interesting.
So sometimes we just have to grab their attention.
I've said we do need to market, but my question is, what is our selling point? And I think that's what the group needs to.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go back and do some research and then I'll keep.
Thank you very much, Bill.
I may show up and you keep moving me farther up on that.
Well, no way, it's narrow here. I don't know. It could go either way.
Do we have a representative that you're, or anyone that you're always communicating with to get involved with this?
I can grab Rick, I, and Grant, I've talked space with, and I'm welcome. I, I, or I'll get email information from all of you or something at some point in time.
Yeah, Bill only talks to me when I'm complaining, so.
I hope to get with this College Coalition later this week, am I right? Tammy, you're going with that, okay? And so I, and when I talk to them, I think maybe, they may help me formulate some sort of a committee. And by all means, to get a couple of board members on there with us at the same time. Or at least when we do our brainstorming session, we'll let you know when and where that is and pull that off, so.
And remember the open door policy. We can't have four board members in that same room.
Is it, you need four to be a problem?
Less than four, yeah, three.
And I'm not really doing that. We're going to form police in Franklin County too.
Is that really true?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd risk it.
Thanks for being patient.
Can you take care of it for me?
Okay, are we up to summer school? Summer school. I'm recommending following courses be offered for the 23 summer school session. Physical education, I'm looking at up to two positions, depending on enrollment. Play-Doh courses and supervised ag experience.
This is not all. This is all?
It is all. Band is not doing anything other than their camp. And everything can be handled in Play-Doh courses. We've offered in the past several, and the kids aren't interested in only doing on Play-Doh during the summer.
Reimbursement is not coming back at 100%, so we're losing money.
Oh, got it. Fine.
Are there any other questions? Motion? Rick, second? Brandy, all right. All in favor? Yeah, thanks, Erin.
That regime?
Thought you were asleep for a second. Next up are our board policies.
Right, these are the board policies that I emailed you probably about a month ago. These are just for discussion tonight. There are several. So is there any particular policy anybody would like to discuss? We will not ask for approval until next.
Weapons.
Board meeting. Okay.
What? I don't have the verbiage in front of me, but.
It can be in their locked car on school property.
Okay.
That is what our policy is currently proposing.
All right.
Except for school resource officer.
Right, right. Any other discussion? Okay, move right along. We have. Here we go.
Updates for the chiller.
Updates for the chiller and-
Chiller, yeah, that's our chiller updates.
Uh, February seventh, we had the pre-bid meeting for the chiller. We had three individuals show up for that meeting, um, that worked with two companies. We've also had, uh, two other companies that have, uh, expressed interest. We will be doing the bid opening at one P.M., February the sixteenth, which is Thursday. As far as the turf project, we finalized the design and colors, I can share those with you through email, um, so you can see what that's gonna look like. Uh, we discussed on alternate bid to include the press box and derailing and access for that. After looking at that, and the engineers looking at that, it was determined that it's not viable, one, to the roof construction, because that's a wooden roof, and two, the way the roof access faces, is that the hatch goes up, and if you were to put a ladder there, it opens right up to the edge. So it's very dangerous. Um, if we were to allow kids to go up it, we'd have to build a staircase up there, or anybody o- other than employees of ours, so we've determined that that is not worth, um, what it was gonna take. I met today with the, the field designer, he's gonna calculate the amount of topsoil that will be removed, and then we'll determine the amount of soil that we'll keep on campus, and then go from there, as far as, uh, people in the community getting it. Uh, sod removal was brought up, I checked into that today. That's gonna be very time-consuming and dealing with deadlines, because we're gonna start this the day after graduation, weather pending, and it will take us all the way up to the first football game. We're trying to try to get it into, for the first football game. Also the cost of doing that, and then, uh, the turf guy also said that, that's a different type of sod, it's not for regular lawns, and wouldn't really work on someone's lawn. So I did check into that.
Keith, I do have, I do have a question about the other side of the press box over there, or on top of the concessions on the other side? Could we build something for the film crew up there?
Um, what we're gonna look at is what's go, you know, our bids, a big, Thursday's gonna be big, and what that chiller comes in, and then what the turf comes in, and if there's any leeway, so.
It may have to be a different project, 'cause you've got that band tower over there as well, um, so you have to, if you're building another structure, they could use that as a band tower, now you've got a band tower you have to deal with.
Right.
What, yeah, what they looked at, what they would look at is using the tallest bleachers, and then going up from there and building a, uh, structure behind that, and then bringing in one of those prefab-
Yeah.
-press box. But once again, you know, on the two million, it, it just depends that bid.
They're expensive.
So, I mean, yeah.
A prefab press box.
On the sod?
That was, uh-
Thought, have we asked any of the youth programs, ballfields, if they need anything?
I have not asked, just because of-
It's not for home lawns, but-
Yeah, I have not asked, didn't even really come up until I was approached by it last week, uh, even thinking about it.
By who?
Hmm?
By who?
Yeah.
Just people out in the community, you know?
I mean, you say time-consuming, but there's equipment in Monster.
You're not taking that there, asking me.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, we can, we can ask Monster if he can cut it, you know, we also have irrigation system in there that we'd have to go around and such, so. I just want, don't wanna-
Doesn't that have to be taken up, the irrigation system?
It will, when the, but they'll, they'll go in there with the backhoe and just rip it out.
All at the one time.
Yeah, you know, if they gotta cut around, you know, that, yeah, so.
And we can't do any of that-
I'll proceed however you want me to proceed.
Huh?
And we can't do any of that before graduation, you don't wanna have empty field.
Yeah.
That, the presentation would not look well.
No.
That'll get one.
Any other discussion?
That's gonna be a quick turnaround.
Yes.
Yeah.
Better not have me ring.
Okay, um, next up, I believe, we don't have Bill here now, so it's legislative updates with Kevin. What you got for us?
Um, Tuesday, what day was that, wait?
Tuesday.
We're all at the Career Center, Tuesday? Tuesday, uh, myself, Tammy, Mr. Isaacs, and Spedendorf. Uh, attended a seminar at the Whitewater Career Center with both of our state senators for our areas, as well as three representatives, um, just to hear what they have going on, and just kind of a brief update from them. They also took some questions, some interesting. Um, I will be attending the State House Day next Tuesday in Indianapolis to, again, hear a little more in-depth, I guess. And so, starting discussions and meeting our representatives or first people, just to build those relationships.
The Senate bill that they have, where if you have sixty percent of a building that is-
Yeah, three ninety.
-on capacity, how does that look?
Three ninety-one, yeah.
It didn't come up.
It's, it didn't come up, yeah, it didn't come up in that meeting.
Well, they, they didn't wanna raise it up. They wanna-
Well, they, they, you're allowed to ask questions, nobody bought it.
We could've asked that question.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I forget exactly where it is in, um, the other while I'm looking for that, and I'll come back to that. Um, I, for other reasons, interested in the AED bill, that, it was in the works last year and just kinda fell off, but it's back in there. So I know there's been some discussions of purchasing and doing some-
We have, we have one in every building now. Um, our discussion would be adding an additional one upstairs at the high school, middle school, um, and one at the soccer concession area, and probably one here, um, right outside the door, and bus barn and maintenance area.
Talked about that.
One, don't, um, football field, is that the one that's gon- she's gonna carry to go to the football field?
Danielle will have one, and Leah will have one, portable, yes.
Okay.
All paid through a grant, yes. But now, right now, we do have five.
Three ninety-one, not three ninety-nine.
Um, have they, when was the last time that they've been tested? When have they been, uh, looked at by blah, 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 you know, like the weights and-
Yes, they have to be, every so long.
Yeah.
Gwen, Gwen kinda monitors that for me.
Okay.
The only reason I, I bring it up is just making sure that we don't do whatever it is we planning on doing or get accomplished, and then have to go back and redo it based on guidelines they send out. Or, it would be nice if some funding came along with that bill.
Right.
No, that is-
I think it's being-
No, it's a short session.
That perspective is all athletic events, I think the language is in that bill, um, which, which we do now, so.
Uh, three ninety-one, the school closings, it is, has not passed anything further than the first reading, and that was back in January, so it hasn't, I would, I would assume it's in committee.
Yeah, I think it is.
Tammy, are you, are you comfortable sort of giving a synopsis of what three ninety-one could potentially do as far as our elementary schools?
I mean, the definition, it says if a building is below sixty percent capacity, um, then you would be forced to close, um, but I think there's probably some parameters in that, um, meaning distance traveled, um-
Something about twenty miles, which both schools-
Twenty miles, one, yeah, so there's things-
Everything falls within twenty miles, so.
You know, I'm wondering what they term as, um, capacity, how are they defining that? Um, is it a class size of twenty-four, a class size of ten? There, there's not any information out on that, um, and I think the other part of that bill is, um, a charter school could, um, ask for an investigation on a, on a partic- particular building that they feel like is under capacity, um-
And that, that, that is all wrong, you know? These buildings belong to Frank County School Corporation, not the state, not the legislatures.
Right.
And they're like Big Brother coming down and putting their thumb on you and say, this is what you're gonna do and what you're not gonna do, and that's, it, it's wrong. And that, you know, the, the people listening out there, get ahold of your representatives and your senators, and raise cane with them and tell them, don't vote for that bill, kill it. It's Senate Bill three ninety-one.
Three ninety-one, I think, um, part of it as well is, um, I just lost my train of thought, um, oh, if, if you have, if you're using it for an educational purpose, then you have to prove what you're using it for. That could a- also open an investigation, so to speak.
Yeah, to echo on what Rick said, as far as paying attention to what's going on, for anybody listening, the, I mean, we've been fighting very hard to keep things financially solvent and to keep buildings open, that's one of my big things coming from my district, is keeping the county schools open, and that bill has the potential to take a lot of control out of our hands on doing that. And I mean, people need to be aware that's out there, there's a risk of, all that we're doing could end up moot if they come in and say, well, here's the criteria, and we're stuck with it. Well, again, they're looking from the standpoint of the building as an educational facility, instead of what it means to the community in a lot of ways. Yeah.
They don't care.
That's it, was there any other legislative updates that we need?
Not at this time. Like I said, uh, had the one meeting and going next Tuesday to the State House to-
Do you want my rubber stamp with my watch, you just put my signature on it and send a lot of emails out? Can't quite do it unless you got a touchscreen, um-
I have one thing to say, I don't know if the board knows that, this year, again, um, a few years ago, we had, because we don't have the gymnastics, um, venue, we don't have the gymnastics equipment, we, we, HSA still allows us to have our gymnastics girls compete, if the, um, school that we want to compete with will allow that. We've used Connersville twice now, when I was A.D., we had two, or, I think right at the beginning when I was A.D., and then we have two girls this year that are competing as Franklin County, but they're not a team, they're just two girls. And, um, I don't know, if you see anything on Facebook, you might say, congratulations, or, you know, just give them a, a boost, um, they're, they look really cute, they're, they're, uh, little tidy things, or, uh, they, they just look real cute, and, uh-
They're, they have a meet this week, I believe, but it's not, it's at Connersville, but it's not against Connersville, it's, they're just letting us use the facility, they don't compete as well.
Be, well, they-
Connersville.
Or is it like an invitation?
It can be both, it can be both. If, if, um, if, if we wanna have, usually Joanne's there, that's Joanne Horders, and uh, she runs the gymnastics thing up there, but, at Connersville, but, uh, usually it's like a try meet, or, um, like, she runs sectional a lot up there, if our girls make it in one area or something, then they, they travel with them. Or sometimes I think we give them, parents are transporting them, correct?